I guess I'm ready. Call the meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Uh, roll call, we're missing Mayor Highsmith, he called and he's not feeling well and unable to attend tonight. We do have a quorum. Uh, anyone who feels comfortable to join me in an opening prayer? Heavenly Father, please, please look out for us as we do our best to serve our fellow citizens of our town. And please look over our town and ensure everyone's safety and prosperity and happiness. Jesus name, amen. Um, approval of the agenda. So, uh, Councilman Ordine and Councilman Whitner, there's a different agenda advertised than what's in front of us. The only difference is unfinished business, A was the airport leases, that's the only difference. And that would be the one, the advertised one is the one we'd be voting on, not the one on the iPad.
And I apologize for scanning the wrong one.
But that's the only difference is the addition.
Mark's got the right one, he, he, he's got the right one printed.
I saw Kim's second email. Yeah, I, yeah, I just sent you that one earlier, I didn't shred the copy and then I just picked it up and.
So could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motions.
For a second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Hardiky, seconded by Councilman Ordine to approve the agenda, any discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Do we have any communications from citizens? Consent agenda, the minutes of July eighth, twenty twenty five. I get a motion towards that effect.
I move that we approve, second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ordine, seconded by Councilman Whitner, that we approve the minutes from July eighth, twenty twenty five. All those, uh, any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Approved. Bills, July ninth, twenty twenty five through July twenty second, twenty twenty five. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review those, if anybody cared to make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
To.
Approve. The bills.
Uh, then moved by Councilman Whitner and seconded by Councilman Ordine that we approve the bills. From July ninth, twenty twenty five to July twenty second, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion?
I have some discussion on the flooring in both restrooms, looks like from Wyoming. Custom epoxy, I'm guessing.
That's, yes, that, yeah, it's epoxy in the, the, uh, rest area of restrooms.
Okay, anyway, that's all, that was the only question I had is where, where that was, what bathrooms those were.
Yeah. I'm not as fancy as the clerk is, I'm putting those other things on there, so I apologize, I don't know how to do that.
Yeah, she's really good, you know.
I don't, I can.
I, uh, I have no further discussion, I just was curious as to what bathrooms those were.
Yeah, it's the, just your restrooms. I think that, and honestly, I think that's a partial payment, I think there's going to be a second payment coming. After the work's all complete, I believe, okay.
Isn't some of that covered under the?
Yeah, so it's a fifty fifty grant with the state, so we pay half and then we get reimbursed.
We pay all, get reimbursed.
Yeah, we pay all, then we get reimbursed half, yeah, so, okay, fifty fifty.
Is there any other discussion on the bills? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? Carry. Um, travel voucher from Joe Highsmith, from July fifteenth, twenty twenty five and July sixteenth of twenty twenty five. The, uh, Wyoming, I'm assuming that's Wyoming Business Council Summit. Two S mileage to and from Riverton for that.
The one does include a meal.
Okay, let's see, total one meal. Eighteen forty four.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, uh, from Councilwoman Hardiky and a second from Councilman Ordine to approve the travel vouchers. So any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries. Uh, public hearing, so we need to. If it's a public hearing, I guess I need to entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
I move that we go into a public hearing.
And I'll second.
Moved and seconded, we go into a new public hearing, uh, discussion? Pro, uh, all in favor, aye. Approved. Okay, this is a zoning deal, uh, chief deep mind.
Yeah, um, so, uh, there's a request that was put in by, uh, Harold Shepherd on June thirteenth to, uh, rezone from, uh, manufacturing to commercial. Uh, his lots. Legal description of the assets. As listed.
Yeah, it's at twenty or whatever, Sage Brush Lane.
Yeah, three twenty Sage Brush Lane.
At three twenty.
Uh, and the request was to, it was published in the Riverton Ranger for three consecutive weeks, and for public hearing today. For any objection or protest.
And, uh, do we have any objection or protest to the zoning? Nobody online? I guess I'd take a motion to go back in a regular session if there's no, uh, public concerns.
I move that we go back.
I'll second it.
It's been moved, uh, by Councilman Ordine, seconded by Councilwoman Hardiky, that we go back into the regular session, uh, any discussion?
This is, this is off of Showbon Road, right?
Yeah, like where you take, uh, right.
Yes, and then, yeah, you go down about three hundred yards and then. Yeah, it was like, well, four houses right back there.
Okay, and then it says trailer sales? Just.
It's, well, that's, we're gonna have to do the business license for that too, but. In his letter, he's just, he wants to do like trailer sales, not house trailer, but.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Like, uh, you know, dump trailers, eighteen feet trailers, huh?
I don't care what he sells, truthfully, I just was curious since. For my own.
It'd be nice to have that business in town.
Yep, agree.
All those in favor of going back into regular meetings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So I guess I would, if we've advertised it, we've held a public hearing, at this point, we can. Uh, I would entertain a motion, it'd be at your will to rezone. Uh, three twenty Sage Brush Lane from M one to C one.
I make a motion to, um, rezone the Sage Brush Lane, uh, address listed. Uh, one hundred West Third to, from M one to C one.
What's, uh, that address is, uh?
One hundred West Third.
A three twenty Sage Brush Lane.
Oh, one hundred West Third is where they live now?
That's our address here.
My bad, I just seen that on the bottom there.
Yeah.
I don't see the address.
Well, if you go to the one down below, so that's the legal description on the first page.
Thank you.
And then the second page has the actual address of three twenty Sage Brush Lane.
I clarify what I said before, I make a motion to, um, approve. Three twenty Sage Brush Lane being rezoned from M one to C one.
Now, if there's houses there, that's not gonna mess them.
You seconding?
Yeah.
That's been moved by Councilman Whitner and seconded by Councilman Ordine to approve the rezoning from M one to C one. So, it's, it's like Third Street. I know it's Sage Brush Lane, but it, there's.
It's directly adjacent from Mike Dimick's disposal facility.
Right, right to the east.
And it's.
There's no houses down right now.
Well, there's a couple of trailer houses out there, and I don't remember the family that has them horses and stuff out there, that is in city limits. That's once.
It's kind of.
Then I run to fast lanes.
What?
And I have to run to fast lanes. The horse.
Right, no, I, I wasn't saying, I'm, I'm just, there's nothing against them having horses, it's not zoned. But I mean, and then that's where Tim James and them lived down there, but they are further, they're the closest neighbor to this property.
That doesn't affect them.
Shouldn't, there's no. City amenities out there.
Yeah, they're not on city water or sewer, uh. And, brother, the whole area is all manufactured.
Okay.
Uh, so, I guess with solid property, it'd be more suited for commercial than manufacturing. Since there's some stipulations.
Pull this up, okay.
I'm pulling up right now.
All right, Sage, Sage Brush Lane, and you've got.
So what's that?
There you go, now it's coming in.
I think it's the square.
This is James's, that's James's. But there's like all this nothingness.
Nothing.
Here's, here's a beautiful, what they're next to.
It's the square right to the left on the corner, correct?
So it's right here. No, not right here, it's right here.
Chris, can you? Kind of circle where, where it's at?
Oh, he's got the same picture up, I do.
So.
Right there.
This block right there, can you see that highlighted? So it's on the left side of Sage Brush Lane, it's just a vacant lot.
And then Dimick's Lot. Is the next, is the next anywhere that's zoned?
That whole area is all M one.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, in its entirety, it was just left as M one. All the way to the city limits boundary. So I mean, M one allows for him to have the disposal facility, but not commercial. So that's why it's all M one out there, and so having a commercial, I mean, he has a business there, obviously, but it's, it's just more suited for commercial. For what he's wanting to do. That's my damage property up there.
So, Chris, can you explain the difference between the commercial and manufactured again?
I like a resurgence in town ordinance, come to me on that, but, uh, manufacturing is, uh, light manufacturing, so that would be fabrication. What the word be, deconstitution of, of, things like that, scrap yards, uh. It could also be something that, uh, assembled products for resale, you know, as business. So it does allow for businesses to be there manufacturing, but it's more in the terms of something that's being, a process being conducted, not just outright retail sales. So that's kind of the big differentiation, when you retail, one's, one's more of a. I mean, I keep saying manufacturing, but I mean, to me, it speaks for itself, you're, you're building something, you're constructing something versus retail sale where you're taking a finished product and selling it. Is the biggest difference.
So if he was building these trailers, then he plans on selling.
The manufacturing would be fine.
And one of the issues that he has with the M one is the twenty foot.
The setbacks are the biggest thing.
From the, in the back of the property, so. On the east side, so since it's a Sage Brush Lane address, everything to the west, he cannot touch twenty feet of his property.
Should put it.
On the west, that full length, north, south, from the north to south on the west side.
So he would lose that much, I don't know if you can see that.
On the backside. To leave for, and that's for in manufacturing, for like alleyways or whatever, for your delivery trucks. And I'm assuming that's why it's in the ordinance, I have no idea why they'd have a twenty foot setback.
He would lose that section right there, both sides. Basically. That was kind of pretty drawn there. So now, that would shrink his property with the setbacks to that. Yeah, other commercials, five foot, so it allows a lot more, you know, thirty feet if you add both sides.
Yeah, commercials want eight foot, I think, seven.
Where is eight foot, yeah, I think you're right.
I think it's eight foot.
Eight foot off the, yeah.
Some. I looked it up a couple of times.
It's a couple trailers.
Well, well, he wants to build that, I know, what he wants to do is build a shop. On the west side, there's no roads or anything going there, but. That would be somewhat of a wind block for everything, that's why he wants to place it there, but you gotta move it off your property line twenty feet, that's a lot. Twenty feet off the Sage Brush. Cause there's no. Roads are developed, I don't think there will be in the near future either. I don't know.
How many acres is this?
Uh, that piece, three acres.
Have any further discussion? Do you think from the audience further? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of rezoning three twenty Sage Brush Lane from M one to C one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Carries. To the publisher, and it's. Or, ordinance. Ordinance says ordinance nineteen dash forty two zoning.
Uh, ordinance nineteen dash forty two, an ordinance amending the map portion of the zoning ordinance in the town, as you're showing in Fremont County, Wyoming. To accommodate the proposed housing development of herbst acres as R one residential. Whereas the town is showing purchased forty acres of undeveloped property between Herbst Road, or sorry, Herb Street and Maple Street. And Seventh Street and Fourth Streets. Which should not yet have been zoned, the town is showing declared to have the map portion of zoning ordinance, the town is showing be amended to classify the following areas R one. With the full legal descriptions from the, uh, pins on the northwest corner, northeast corner, southwest corner, southeast corner in its entirety. Uh, whereas this request is deemed to be compatible with the overall zoning pattern and philosophy of the town. Now therefore be ordained by the governing body of the town, as you're showing in Wyoming, that in order to accommodate the proposed housing development and the needs of the town, as you're showing, the above legally described property will be re, will be classified as R one.
That's an ordinance we have to pass out three times?
No, not for this.
Not for a zoning ordinance.
There's three ways that we can rezone in the town. Ones by this process and there are two ways, advertising, having a public hearing, or upon request of a person, like we did with Harold Shepherd.
And advertising, and has over here now, all right. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number nineteen dash forty two, maybe we can get into discussion at that point.
I make a motion to approve nineteen dash forty two.
Moved by Councilman Whitner and seconded by Councilman Ordine to approve ordinance number nineteen dash forty two in, onto discussion. That's, I wish we had our map buttoned on it.
So, but it's, herbst acres, that forty acres that we've been talking the last three years.
And it butts right up to R one.
Well, R three. And.
Cause where I lived, on the six hundred block of Pine Street was R one. I thought.
There's a portion there that's already, yeah, there's portions, R three, and there's some that's R three, sorry, R one, R three, is a combination. But that northwest corner of the city, this is R one, so yes, it does a butt up against R one. On that northern portion.
On the north part, and then it kind of goes down.
Yeah, then as it goes down south, then it goes in R three, so it's kind of both. But when we purchased this and had subdivided, um, the discussions in the last council was for it to be R one. So as to allow for single family homes, you know, trying to have it as a newer development, not having, you know, mo, mobile homes placed on it, which R three would allow. Um, and, um, we talked about limiting the size or requiring a size of at least fourteen hundred or twelve hundred square feet, I believe, so we don't have. Super tiny homes, that way if somebody builds a new house out there, they don't have somebody that builds a super tiny home and then lowers their housing value and investment and all that stuff, so we try to make it all. Congruent and, and the same as R one, that was a discussion we produced.
And the ordinance changes that we discussed last meeting that we haven't done yet, all the zoning stuff. That was in it, we're to have a minimum size for R one. Zoning only.
Which is a twelve hundred square feet. I believe it's twelve hundred, yeah, I've got, I'm starting to get everything put together to pass it, but it's pretty small.
What? Twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred is a pretty small.
And it might have been fourteen hundred, we, we had discussion back and forth.
It's not terrible, it's small.
Pretty small. I live, I lived in a thirteen hundred and fifty square foot house, on frame, it's small.
I lived in a twelve hundred pound square foot, and it was fine. We were happy, if we could have moved our house to that, the property, we'd have taken it, I loved that house.
Now, here's all those old ones were like, oh, square feet back in the day, man.
That was back in the day, we're with the times.
I, I think the discussion really came down to the, the cost of construction, you know, a lot of people might. Instead of getting a two thousand square foot, you know, paying three hundred dollars a square foot or whatever the going rate is now, give them the option to conform to the requirements at a smaller square footage, so they just wanted, you know, twelve hundred. Three, thirteen hundred square foot, so they can afford to do it in a more economical way than being forced to do two thousand square foot homes or whatever the prices people allow, that was kind of the intention, but still ensuring that it's new built homes.
Single families.
Or new. Manufactured homes placed on a permanent fixed foundation would also be able to go on.
And the twelve hundred is a minimum.
I don't remember what.
It might be fourteen hundred, I.
Whatever.
But we haven't, we haven't finalized it yet, so that's still, that's still open, so we can discuss.
Correct, yeah.
That's still coming.
Never been approved, so it could be adjusted. Yeah.
So this is just classifying as, as just R one initially, then whatever we do with the actual ordinance in the future, here in the next couple of months, we'll, you know, size wise or whatever stipulations we want to go on.
Is there any further discussion on the. Uh, ordinance nineteen forty two, re, uh, zoning the unzoned area? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next page. Resolution on permits, business license for Phil Keller. Riverton outfit. Rocky Mountain applicators for roofing.
Are you Phil? Okay. That's all the information we have at this time, so I don't. Phil is a, he's a. He's a roofer, that's based out of, uh, out of Riverton, yeah, yeah, he, uh. He's a very experienced roofer, I mean, his system is, I mean, his setup and his crews are. Quite professional. And they do good work, and they did my house in Riverton, and get, they, they maybe, no, not may, he will be doing my house here, yeah, as you're showing, assuming he gets his business.
Was that, oh, okay, so I'm assuming that's.
So is that a motion, or you, or you, are you saying there's a personal conflict?
I don't know that there's a conflict if they're.
You're not making any money off it, so.
Oh, no, I, no, I'm certainly not making.
Losing a lot.
They pay the boatload of money, that's for sure.
They do a great job.
Personally, if it was me and I was needing somebody to get this approved for a job for me, I would abstain, but.
I don't think.
That's your decision. If I had personal interest in it passing. It, it. It's, it's, yeah, we, we would have. Question of. But that is your decision, I'm not telling you to do any.
Is there an issue?
I don't think so, if you're not making any money off of it, but you can hold off on voting, man.
I'm not making any, nothing, no, I think Phil would be a good addition to our contractor list as you're showing, I know there's another house that he's looking at doing as well, so. Um, if, cause I'm not making any money, and I.
Well, I cast a vote, I don't have a problem with it, he's paid his due, let's move on.
I was waiting on a motion.
Might make a motion to approve the Rocky Mountain applications.
Uh, it's been moved by Councilman Whitner and seconded by Councilwoman Hardiky to approve the business license for Rocky Mountain Applicators Incorporated. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Carries. We have a permit for what appears to be is a brand spanking new trailer house. For four fifteen Pine Street, which is zoned R three and allowed by ordinance.
I also make a motion to approve this, we had already approved this on the building permit at one point in time.
I'm seconding it, so. Been moved and seconded for the, uh. Mobile home, or. Guess what's the? The exact wordage here?
It's the.
Says building license.
Yeah, so it's a. The ordinance requires a building permit for moving a.
Right, so it's, it'll be classified technically as a building permit, okay. Been moved and seconded that we approved the building permit for. Mister, uh, Gregory, I, I don't know how to pronounce that.
Sunshine? Close, okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Are you moving there, or more of a vacation deal, or?
We'll be moving, we'll be moving part time for now.
Huh, huh, well, welcome, all those in.
Hopefully to make it full time, sure.
Oh, great.
I have one question, um, the building permit, it said something about you planning on fencing and doing some grass, and is that still a part of your plan?
It is.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was still the course, just as some of your adjacent neighbors on the other side of Pine. Uh, directly in that potential block, they've got, you know, not the fences, a make or break deal, but. Hopefully your landscape, if you will, doesn't change my vote, but hopefully you'll compliment.
That's our intention.
Awesome.
Uh, any other discussion? Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carries. Hopefully that was painless enough for you. Welcome to the community.
Yeah.
That's more planted.
Yeah, it is. So uh we seem to be getting a a influx of votes from DuBois.
Did you guys get along or? All right. Well, thanks for coming in and. Airport lease unfinished business.
Not totally. Sorry, the leases expired July first. But some of the people had paid for the whole year.
Cause they didn't read their lease.
But so they had two hundred dollars. I believe we were gonna refund them the two hundred dollars. That was, they paid for the second half of that six months. And so last council, we needed to figure out what we were gonna charge so the clerk can get the new paperwork out. For the next, whatever terms it's gonna be. So.
I haven't read the lease, I guess, to be honest, but aren't they supposed to be, I don't know, keeping airplanes in there?
That was part of it. The other part of, the other part of the lease, I've kind of looked into this a little bit and called some other uh. Towns and Riverton, DuBois, Scrable. Obviously called Riverton just to get a little bit of a perspective. Uh DuBois have called just to find out. Obviously, they're a little bit bigger than us as far as population goes, but. Uh just trying to figure out what really is requirement now and and some things. Uh what I have found out was. On new hangars built, there is a. And I didn't bring my notes because I was un- unprepared, but they have a forty foot gap space between hangars. Um, and in that forty foot space, uh they're supposed to have a fire retaining wall, which is essentially a concrete wall. This is what every, this is kind of just code. Granted, uh everybody's kind of got a paved runway and. Maybe a little bit more with the times than we currently are, right? So um. But just kind of let you guys catch up the speed of my own research. Um and then in that piece, if they have more than one airplane in their hangar, um they. To divide that airplane, uh they also have to have another firewall there. They can have a door in there. Or an entryway, doesn't matter what size, but there has to be another concrete barrier to divide the planes. So if you got two planes, you gotta have a concrete wall in the middle of them.
Height of the um hangar?
There's, there's no requirement depending on plane size of height uh that I had found out. Could be wrong on that. But everybody has said that it is for solely purpose of storing your airplane. Everybody that I've talked to, it's, we essentially, your lease is for the dirt. You build the hangar, you maintain the hangar. If you fail to do so, that voids your lease and. That's the end. Now, if they go back in there, Grable had some old ones that had to clean up. They go in there, they clean them up. They bill whoever had that lease for the cleanup, essentially kind of like we've ran into with some of our buildings in town. Um, what I can tell you that I found out is DuBois is upwards of two thousand bucks uh for six months. Grable is about seventeen hundred for six months. So us. Riverton's more. Yes, because they have a fueling station. Welcome to call.
For hangar lease?
Yes. It's paved and you have direct runway with light, so you're you're and fuel. Absolutely, you can call.
But it's, it's also based on square footage of your hangar.
Correct. But the average cost for just the planes that, which we can really only base it off of the one plane that we have here. That's what we're looking at price.
I know if you're not using it for aviation purposes, your lease gets pulled.
Right. So that brings into the next thing of me looking at these things. We just spent eight thousand dollars in fence. Or are in the process of doing so. There's two buildings out there that need rummaged and done away with entirely. Whether the town does that with our guys or we subcontract this out, it's still an expense. So. If you space this out, you say a hundred dollars over six months, you can't run a ten by ten cubicle storage unit for a hundred bucks for six months. Not even at Nick Hoffman's ten storage units, can you pay a hundred bucks for six months? So we're clearly underpriced. Now, I'm not saying we need to. Be with everybody else, but a hundred dollars for six months is significantly. Cheap and that's why it's turned into what it's turned into as far as storage. Granted, I guess you could take that as an opinion. But there's four hangars out there and one airplane.
That's my understanding. The one with the airport, the airplane, he pulls it during the winter. Due to the fact we don't have a paved maintained runway and then has it back when the weather is conducive, which is perfectly, I think perfectly acceptable. The others still seem to be using for being used for aviation, but. I personally think the way to go would to send a communication. This is what the lease states.
The lease is redo for. We we set the six month mark when we redid this back in January. So regardless, we gotta set a price.
Yeah, and if I may, I can't remember exactly when, but it's been. Less than a year we redid the lease and I know it went out to everybody. It was with notices that, hey, you have got to maintain.
We did have that in the notices, the step up maintenance.
Yeah.
So what'd be the next step to have somebody uh with some credentials and inspect them and determine what's?
I would turn, well, if it was me, you know, it's an ongoing problem and they're violating the lease, terminate the lease and deal with it. Or say you have so many months to get this done.
I like the so many months to get this done. That seems reasonable given.
If we give another six months like we did in January with the notification that it's not up to. Standards, even if it's not housing airplanes at least part of the year and it's not up to standards. The release, the lease will be revoked in. January and you'll have X number of days to remove your property.
I I think that's fair, but I also think it needs to come contingent with. An increase because like I said, you can't rent a storage unit for a hundred dollars for six months.
True, but they're in the dirt.
It's still. It's still the.
Twelve hundred a year is not bad. That's a hundred dollars a month.
So my recommendation would be eight fifty to a thousand bucks is what I think would be fair for the year or for six for the year. Well, that essentially that's less than the hundred bucks uh for the six months. Who is what we charged last lease? Can you do, can we verify that? Just so I'm not speaking out of turn since I won't hang that from.
Was a hundred bucks.
For six months?
For six months.
Uh it was, I thought it was.
Cause it was fifty bucks.
I think it got raised. I can't remember.
Two hundred a year.
It was two hundred a year, so it was for a hundred for six months.
Yeah, a hundred for six months. And then the one paid two hundred for six months and six months, even though it was only a six month lease and the lease explicitly stated this is for six months. But their new process, they were just used to paying for the year, so.
So my recommendation would be eight fifty to a thousand for the year.
Yeah, and I just, when I say, I remember it wasn't that long ago, we went over this and we were looking at pictures of how bad a shape these hangars were. And I remember there was discussion in letters that went out with leases about maintaining property. So at some point, just like it is with all the other properties, if you're gonna do something, you need to do it. Just quit saying that you're gonna do it. I know it's not a popular decision, but.
Eight fifty divided by twelve. If we did seventy-five dollars a month, just kind of getting a yearly figure, it comes out to nine hundred bucks. So half a year would be four fifty. So that's in your ballpark-ish area. In seventy-five, I mean, it's it's still property, you know, and with a new fence and. You know, so I I'm, I'm just giving this out as an example that that gets in your ballpark and seventy-five. I can't imagine how that seems unreasonable.
Right.
You know, I mean, if you, if you own an airplane, seventy-five bucks is still a gift. I mean, it really is. So.
I'm not, I wonder if, I'm not totally for raising that that drastically that quick. I guess personally, but.
We're about, we're already in at eight thousand and we're about to be in it to clean these up. I just about guarantee probably four to five thousand each hangar. So now we're in at twenty thousand dollars of the town's pocket.
Well, actually the owners are liable for.
If they pay.
Based on the shape of those two hangars. Good luck, right?
So.
So how would you? Jake, how would you like to see this go then in order to give them?
I don't know.
Fair warranty and then time. I mean, we could do a. We could stick with what we charged for the first six months and say at the end of this year, we're gonna raise it to this and so.
Well, that's what I think if we rather than just, oh, by the way, it's this much all of a sudden. If we say, all right, at the end of the calendar year.
I al- I also feel like if we increase it, the ones that aren't doing anything with the buildings are gonna get to a point where they're just, they're out. One, money talks, right? Like you 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 either in, are you serious or you not?
Here's your deadline for cleaning it up and here's where your rates are gonna be.
And if you don't, if you don't clean it up and and pay the rate, well, we know you ain't serious.
Right.
Well, our normal renewals are in January. Our renewal schedule was January. I mean, I don't think it would be out of the norm to let them finish this year and then start in January first. Their new rates are gonna be that.
These are the rates and these.
Six months, four fifty bucks isn't gonna kill us in six months, but it gives them time to either.
My issue with that is we've already given them six months and they've done nothing.
But we didn't have a price for what we're gonna go to.
Well, but we sent the the request that you need to take measures to improve this. They're falling in and they've done nothing. That's my concern.
That's true. We sent the request, but if we send that demand now.
But he knows what was sent. And it was pretty demanding.
I didn't read it, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, the only part I did was the lease portion, but I remember we looked at pictures and there was discussion. I know. Kim and uh Joel were supposedly talking to the other. Cause Joel was pretty upset about the condition of those hangers too, from what I recall.
Are they li- liable if they leave, walk away and leave that monstrosity there? We tear it down, send them a bill? Is that how that works? And they don't pay the bill we sue them then.
I mean, tried to, yeah, and you try to collect. All depends on how much you want to spend on collecting.
I'm gonna cast a vote that we increase the rent to nine hundred dollars for the year.
So starting in January?
Starting now, starting August, where they've already, we can't do nothing already through July.
We can backdate it.
Okay, well, however that works.
We're renewing our leases in January, so if we do it for a full year, it changes our renewals only to July, so it throws us off.
But we only did a six month lease.
Right, with the intention of doing another six month lease before we go to a full year.
From July.
Yeah, so I would, I would suggest we stick to.
Six months.
Six, well, no, six months initially, then.
Redo it in.
July first, it's a for a full year, but since the rate's gonna change, if you wanna change the rate now for the second six months of this initial lease period. Have that, whatever that's gonna be, if it's half with it, it's going up to fine, but then July first, they renew as a full year lease.
Hey, you you gotta give them a lease ninety days prior if you're gonna change it.
Even though the lease was only six months?
Yeah, it's in your, yeah, in the lease agreement.
So uh. Well, let me put the, the says lessees notice of exercise of the right shall be deemed automatically given unless lessee shall get written notice at least ninety days. Before we know it, they expect to extend the term of intent to not extend or new. So lessees gotta give the town ninety days. The uh, but the thing is, it's only supposed to be extended. Or renewed if the lessee has duly and faithfully performed all covenants. So I mean, it's up to you. It doesn't have to be renewed if you believe that they have failed to meet their. Portion of the lease for maintaining their. Hangars.
So if we increased it for four fifty for the next six months, cause a new lease is due, the first lease only carried us to July.
Well, if we're gonna increase the rates, we wouldn't be able to do it. For ninety days, so we'd have to prorate it. The increase wouldn't take effect for at least ninety days. If you did for six months, if it could be prorated, the first thirty days would be on what's currently at a hundred dollars. For signal, two hundred dollars a year, so ninety days prorated and then the other ninety days would be at. Whatever rate for the total, if they renewed it, but that's why I was kind of suggesting just. Set the new rates and make it effective just for simplicity sake. And my, my advice would be, everybody's expecting you to renew in January. I say you either terminate it now for failure, we can say had noticed to get their stuff in line. Or you tell them in January you're gonna renew it, or it's gonna go up exponentially, however you wanna do it, but. Yeah, that would be my advice. And quite honestly, you you guys know me, I mean, if someone is not conforming, I I'm one usually bringing down the hammer, so. It's a contract. I suggest to stick with it.
I guess I'm. I'm a little confused on the, since it was only a six month lease.
They're technically expired. Well, yeah, so that's what I. My point is the lessee has the ability if to continue if they conform with the covenants. So you're either gonna have to come and have them, you terminate the lease and they're done. Where you say, okay, you conform with the covenants and you can continue for another six months. That's where my options, well, I'm saying the options at, if you're gonna say that you're gonna continue the lease, then it stays at the same price. For the year till January.
Okay.
So we'd have to go out there and decide, you know, if we wanna send out renewals for all of them or if we wanna terminate the lease because they didn't fulfill those obligations and they're. I don't, like, give them thirty days to conform if they wanna renew it, I guess, or something like that, but whatever it looks like, but.
So no matter what, if they have their lease for the second half, if they conform, it's a hundred dollars a month until we get to January.
Yes, cause they have the expectation to be able to continue the lease. At the lease that they signed at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, and since we're July, late July, almost August, that kind of makes sense anyway.
Yeah. And then January it'd go up to whatever.
Yeah.
It's gonna be. Um, I mean, we can do that. I mean, go out there and inspect them and then whatever the council wants to do, I think we can do, give them thirty days. If they wanna continue their lease, they have thirty days to fulfill their obligations. If not, they won't be offered a lease. Torrent lease at that point or just terminated. If they haven't got out there and done anything, terminated immediately.
Yeah.
We'll have three, three leases, so it's not like anyone, sort of watch out there.
I think that's fair. As long as we're all under the understanding that in January, we need to. And I, I mean, it stinks for the. For the gentleman that has abided.
Yeah, whatever you wanna. I think you, I don't want your motion to change it to, but those, you rephrase your motion, you know, from this to whatever.
There was no motion.
There was.
Jordan said I would vote for that. That's not a motion.
Yeah, that's a motion, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to carry out the six-month lease. For those that have followed the lease. And for those that have not followed the lease, for their leases to be terminated. Uh, with the stipulation. Uh, come January of twenty-six. That we revisit the lease amount for the, on the new lease of twenty-six.
So you don't wanna set the lease now?
Um, yeah, to set the new lease for twenty-six to nine hundred dollars a year.
And I think it's rather than get notice of that now.
That's why I was asking.
Right, we.
Keep revisiting it, it causes even more.
Okay, so the motion has been made. To renew the second six months.
At the current rate?
At the current rate for twenty twenty, calendar year twenty twenty-five, for those who have followed the. Lease terms. And to set the lease rate beginning in twenty, January twenty twenty-six of nine hundred dollars a year. Is the motion on the table.
I'll second that.
So moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? I guess. On who makes the determination if they're following the terms of the lease? I know there's an issue. I know there's issues. I'm not disputing that. I'm saying from like a legal standpoint.
That would be your, the administration that would go out and inspect it.
So look at. Yeah, administration, maybe with a public work or something, chief police.
From my perspective, if they are making. Attempts at improvement and continued improvement, even if it's not fully what it needs to be, but they're showing that improvement from so many years being derelict.
Keep continue the.
Yeah, I think that shows.
We want everybody to.
But if they've really done nothing and it's deteriorated even worse, then obviously it speaks for itself.
We want everybody to succeed and keep. But they have to do it.
But if no attempt has been made, I think that kinda goes away with what you're saying.
Can you further?
I'm gonna start, used to windset and blowing those two over.
They're they're sagging more than they were last time. I think any of us have looked at them.
Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Uh, some good discussion.
Finish them off.
New business. Residential lots, but we already covered that.
No, this is separate.
Okay.
Well, Joel's on here, so I'll, so. Do they have any computers that can pass Sam a little bit, but I'll try and show them so. This is that four acres that we just rezoned on, I want to use all the lots that we were buying. So if you look on the far right, right up against the west side addition, those ten lots right there are all, um. Put in vicinity for power, water, sewer and gas. So they can be connected. Currently, those ten, uh, goes on to the power company and gas company and believe some of these lots on Seventh Street. Can also be connected. Initially, without having the expense, the estimated expense is about. Five thousand dollars in the lot to connect all utilities. So that includes, uh, tap, water tap fees. Um, and then the power company and close we've got for those connects. So for about five thousand is. Tentatively, you know, the ballpark for.
Those sixteen.
For those, these ten lots on the right side, the bar you should write up against, uh, West Side Edition.
Yeah.
And that would be, it says Elm Street, but this isn't the newest one. We've changed it to Cottonwood, so it's not confusing with.
The real Elm Street.
Street, yeah. Which has its own nightmares.
You know what, though? There's no dips on Elm Street from Second Street North. Very funny. There's no dips, though.
Yeah, so and then on Seventh Street, we believe that we can connect those lots as well. Um, so really kind of starting off the discussion is that, um. You know, the sub-residential lots, um, I believe Marshall can clarify, there's most different ways, but. The way that we're looking at doing is setting a singular price for these lots. And then average, they couldn't be sold to a developer. It had to be single lots. I believe it's first come, first served and they can only buy one lot. They can't buy ten lots or it could a single individual buy multiple lots as long as they're not a developer. That's the one part that I'm confused on. Yeah, so I mean, you can still go through a developer, but the way it would look is the developer would develop it. This is just from looking at different contracts I've seen, um, developer development. You guys, the town would sell it through a Realtor and as each lot sold, then the developer would get reimbursed for the cost. Of doing the development, like putting in the streets, the curves, that sort of thing, not developing the house. Right? Cause the only thing you can sell as a town. Uh, or set price on lots for residential is the lot with power. Uh, road up to it, sewer, water. And so we get, the town council can say, senior price. For the lots. At X amount of dollars and sell them to individuals. For X amount of dollars after. For the same price, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't have to go through a developer. We can put them out there and then, you know.
So that's something we could use that.
Right, you you could do it just with the developer and they go out and build it. Then you're gonna have to deal with, I mean, I mean, these are just things that you're gonna have to think about, like. Well, now that they paid for it, who's gonna pay for the road? Versus if you go have a developer develop it first. I eat just the streets, power, sewer, water, and they get a chunk of it after it sells as reimbursed and as it sells.
But I would have different many lots that are currently, and she's showing you that don't have streets, don't have curves, don't have sidewalks or any of that, we sell.
But I understand that. I'm just saying, those are things you might wanna think about if you want it nice, you want it nicer, if you want.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, but that's, that's, right, there's a cost there, right? There is, obviously your lots would be more expensive, but that's just one way to look at it.
Has anybody talked to that? Real, real estate lady, can we go through the Realtor to do that too?
She, well, she could, yeah, she could be the one. That's what, what the way this.
And she could.
Statute is actually, so this is the one time you can use a Realtor to set, they sell land.
She probably knows the developer that would do it.
Yeah.
I think personally, this has been sitting here, this has been a motion. Motionless ball on this piece of property over there for some time, so. Just speaking out of personal opinion, I would like to see us get rolling. On selling these. Because we don't have anything in place with her currently. And anything ironed out on that behalf. And and maybe we put them up for sale and we get that ironed out and then we can re-vene and and intermingle her at a later time. But I'd like to see us get these up. And see if. There's an an interest to get somebody to build some homes. Personally.
I'd like to see if she. Take this on and have a contract ready to sign next meeting.
Now, I I I'm gonna tell you one thing that I experienced there in Temopolis, even though the. Development wasn't in the town. People were calling about who's gonna pay to have the road put in, the power, cause they expected it to be put in, and it was never in the initial contract that they signed. So if it's gonna go the way that you're thinking about, where you're just gonna sell the lots with nothing to it. Have it in mind that people are gonna be calling the town and expecting me to pay for it.
Well, I I I understand that, but I also think in the back of my head. There's a lot of dirt roads currently. So I I guess, you know, I just think of that.
Well, the problem is the cost of roads is, last I checked, about one point four million dollars for one lot.
At that rate, we'll never pave this and be able to.
Uh, that's why there's dirt roads, which is true.
And then I guess I, you know, not to. Bring out the hammer or anything, but then we paved this new subdivision, boy, how many people would we piss off in this town on why we didn't pave their dirt street? Which.
Everyone that's got a dirt road, that's how many.
Absolutely, but I mean. It's part of the game.
That's it. You bought the dirt street. That's, there you go.
Well, go to Laramie. I mean, I I family grew up in Laramie and stuff, and you have West Laramie, which is literally all dirt roads, and then you have. East Laramie, which is all paved and gets new streets and and whatnot with the colleges and all that stuff. You know.
I would like to just see us get it, get it rolling, see if there's interest, get it out there personally. If we have to put it in the contract that. We're not paving the road.
Well, it.
You know, maintain the road as far as gravel.
Certain ways where we did small areas that we could afford to pay for, we could put a street. You know, for one block with curb, and then, you know, you see other developments where it stops right there, but nothing else is sold right there. It's for future growth. You know, that's one way to do it is, you know, piecemeal, part by part. And not just try to pave it all at once and everything ready to go and just, I, you know, set up certain some spots and then you. Get those done one at a time over time. And realistically, we have seventy-two lots. I doubt we're gonna sell and have seventy-two houses built in Shoshone the next year. It's just, you know, it's not probably gonna happen, but.
You know, I I agree with you. I it, it's, the weeds are growing, you know, and things are. I mean, something needs to be done, but I also wanna do it in the. So a way that it makes sense to have it done, you know, so I mean, that's kind of been, that was part of our process with the, uh, H A project and all that stuff. But, um. It it makes sense to me that, I mean, Joel has made headway with this Realtor out of Mills. I'd really like to hear what she has to say.
And and just to kind of. Talk about the the Realtor, she she did send over a draft contract and I sent back my opinions on it. On what I mean, change so it actually matched. What happens here in in Shoshone versus what's going on in those.
So she is serious about getting after it.
Yes.
So let me ask one question. So we could, I, town council can isolate whatever lots. And sell directly to the Realtor for X amount of money.
No, no, the Realtor's the one who sells it at a set price.
Okay, that's, okay, so we set the price and then she.
Right, and so the few contracts are reviewed, what they had was a deal where the Realtor went in. With developer, the developer did all the work. Right? No cost to the town, is each lot sold. Then.
They'd take their.
They, they would take their cut. Does that make sense? And so that way, there, everything was uniform and you had set standards in those contracts. For, you know, how, where the curb and gutter were, sidewalks, whatever you wanted. Versus like what happened in that new development out there in Temopolis where. They said, hey, we're gonna sell lots and we promise at some point we'll put in a road and power. Right?
But just. We we built a house in Colorado Springs and the idea, I mean, but when we moved. When we bought the lot, there were no roads in, but the curbs are there, so they're getting ready. I mean, it was, we bought it in the process of going on. And just that. We knew when we finally would move in, there was gonna be a road, there was gonna be fire hydrants, there was gonna be all the utilities we needed. The one thing we didn't have was grass and trees, you know, so we had to, we had to basically do that. I learned how to put in sprinkler systems. It was fun. But, uh, anyway, the I, but. I think a big part of this is where do we want Shoshone to go? I mean, really, where do we want Shoshone to go? And. You know, is more the same where we wanna be? You know, it could be. But that's not where I think we really, I don't think that's gonna make Shoshone the rose of, uh, of Wyoming if we do that, so. I mean, it just makes sense to me, let's get this Realtor in. I I had no idea what's in that contract and what that even. Maybe that, let's have a discussion, you know, about.
Well, that's kind of talking to Joel, you know, we're trying to get this going because. We've literally, it's always been, we need to discuss this, let's discuss, 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 let's discuss. Three years later, we're still at the same drawing board of let's discuss. So we need to like.
So we don't know what we're, at this point, we don't know what we're doing. That's why having her come in.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, we're at the point now of having discussions with actual action attached.
We need, we need actions.
Yes, yeah.
That's, I think we all agree to that. I mean.
Well, it sounds like we got some action going on with a little contract negotiation.
But I mean, I think you got, the council could make action tonight by just saying, hey. We wanna go forward with actually getting this Realtor on board with the developer, if that's the way you wanted to go, or just say, we're gonna start. I mean, I think you have one or two options to say that, or you're just gonna say, let's start selling lots and see how it goes.
Yeah, I I.
So are you making a motion to go forward with the Realtor? Is that what I heard?
I don't, I don't know what the proposal is with the Realtor.
You're not agreeing to a contract here. Uh, the motion could be, be it. That we're, you guys will to move forward with that Realtor. That's not agreeing to a contract yet.
I'll make a motion.
But it's actually an act.
Just a ball rolling, I guess.
I'll make a motion that we continue to move forward on the selling of these lots. I'm not gonna say that includes a Realtor or not includes a Realtor, because I don't know what's in that contract or isn't in that contract, and I don't wanna tie us.
At at this time, there is no contract. So that's why I'm saying it was.
But you're looking at something.
Yeah, example that we sent of.
Back and forth is taking place, so. I think.
I guess. Uh, moving forward with. One or two roads or one or two routes, we're gonna move forward with a Realtor to be determined in the future and what the terms are gonna be in the future, but that's the route we're gonna go down. Identifying a Realtor, moving forward with that and getting a contract around that, or moving forward with the town selling it individually. Irrespective of that, so I guess.
I I guess I have one question for Marshall. Hypothetically, which I know one attorney probably hates this word. But. If we were to motion to sell nine of these lots. But then we contract in with this Realtor. And this looks like a better route. What can we do with that?
Well, I, it all depends on if they sold yet or not.
Let let's say they haven't.
Yeah, I mean, just change course.
Or we've sold one and she can take over the other eight?
If if the developer says they can work with it, yeah.
I think we get a Realtor in that knows what they're doing and. Let's work with some developers and.
I'll.
Tell that Realtor, sell every one of them.
Yeah, I I I just, I can't sit there and tell you what what a developer slash. You know, a group of people that would develop that would want, I I just can't tell you that.
I wanna hear what she has to say.
I don't think it would hinder us either way. I did.
Just do direction to the mayor to start getting that to bring the council for the final decision to be made on this what we're gonna accept.
We haven't even set a price. We're just saying we're gonna move.
Move forward in this direction.
Yeah, and if we move forward in the direction of we're gonna sell them ourselves and then all of a sudden they make a con, they, the the mayor and the attorney and and this Realtor.
Long plan is throwing it yourself, dealing with work, anything we've got hardly.
I thought we had a Realtor, was my understanding.
Oh, there's been no contract signed.
No, I I I was.
So I mean. But since it's bare land and we can turn it over to. Uh, yes, uh.
I'd just like to to add, and what you're saying is is good stuff and, uh. What my question to you is, and I don't know what town code is. Earlier tonight, you were talking about what size of home do we require on these lots? If you don't figure that out and you sell a lot, and I might wanna put a tiny house on it.
We do not want that to happen.
No, that's right. So here's, but but that needs to be worked out before I buy the lot.
Yeah, and all that will be worked out.
One of the things, even if it's twelve hundred feet or fourteen hundred or or two thousand feet. I can build a a twelve hundred square foot home on one level. Or I can build it on two levels of six hundred square foot. Or three levels of.
Ah, there's maximum.
Four hundred square. Four hundred square foot.
There's maximum height in R one. I don't remember.
Okay, so I've got a basement.
Oh, there you go.
And two levels. Of a four hundred square foot, which is. One square foot over the minimum of, or the maximum of a tiny home. So those things, I think you really need to. Get that hammered out before you sell that first lot. Cause even if you say you have to have a twelve hundred square foot home. I know, and, and I, I know you guys don't want to hear, well, this is the way we did it in DuBois, cause that was the perfect place. Uh, not necessarily, but the way they addressed that in town code. Was. Uh, the minimum square foot was the first floor above ground level.
So in our ordinances, um, the minimum square footage does not include a basement. So it currently.
What's being discussed.
Second floor is the main level.
Right. So that, that needs to really be. Um, put in there, so.
That would prevent someone from having a.
That would prevent me from building my four hundred square foot home with three levels.
So to answer your question. That, we've already got that fleshed out. We'll have to have one more minute for the ordinance and that could change a little bit during that process, but that will be coming.
Now, we have like.
Yeah, so even if we start this process, we're not gonna have lots up for sale next week where it's gonna be sold in two weeks. We're gonna have that fully approved as an ordinance this year before any of these lots, even if we're negotiating with a contract. Before it even go up for sale or even actually sold, that will already be done. Before that, we'll have to, because if we don't.
Right, yeah, you just open yourself up.
Exactly, so.
And one of the other things that, that we have had in, in DuBois was that you couldn't build a, just a, a roof. At ground level. And then have a underground house or something like that. It was.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of weird how it's.
Got one of those.
Yeah, I would say we do have one of them.
Yeah, so he, I mean, if, if that's what you want to have, then that's okay. Um, but probably not, if you're. I, I will say I would be glad to. With anybody, attend those meetings if I knew when they were and I was able to.
Yeah, so the plan is to start having all meetings in August, um. As the first reading. And we'll probably have to take it piece by piece and start with each one, just because there's so much.
Sure.
We're changing.
Yeah.
We wanted to do it all in one.
Better just do R one first.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to go down.
Yes.
You know, and, and do things as it orders. We can do probably R one, R two, R three. You know, in three readings consecutively and then move on to the other stuff, but, uh. So, yeah, those will be. Uh, presented towards the end of August and it'll be online and, and. During the August, the first reading changes can be made and.
Sure.
Comments, that, that's.
Yeah, okay. All right, just want to.
Excellent points.
But no, yeah. You gotta know what you're buying.
Yeah, so. Back to Jordan's original point, and that was, this, let's keep this moving forward some.
Yeah, that's what Joel and I were talking about. The, the purpose of this was to get direction, which avenue to pursue.
I would like that to be, I would suggest we make that an agenda topic for next meeting. An update on. The uh. So the lots while we had.
So, make a motion to table this.
Well, we need, nothing's changed though, so between now and then, cause we're not, we're just, we need to know. The first step of which path do we want it to go down with a realtor?
Maybe in two weeks to the next meeting, there'll be something ironed out with this realtor. Maybe.
And it's not. Well, it's just one realtor. There's multiple realtors that look at, it's for Joel that direction to. Look at realtors, bring to council, to consider the terms and conditions of what's gonna happen. Nothing's gonna happen. It's just giving them direction or. You know, it's just cloudy. It's like, well, we might do this. We're trying to get some direction here that's concise. That's, I guess, what I'm trying to. Confer for Joel, that, that's what we're looking for, is the council's. Direction of how do we want to pers- perceive with this.
I would entertain a motion to move forward, trying to sell this land. Either. On our own. Or through. Or keep trying to find a realtor. Or keep working with realtor, something of that nature. If we had a motion, one way or two. Realtor way. Realtor. That's not committing to any contract or any one realtor. But then that would give the mayor the direction as the CEO of the town to say, hey, go find us a realtor and bring it here. If we, that's what you guys want to do. Otherwise, we can try to keep doing what we've been doing to sell it.
Yeah, we're not setting a price or anything today, or it's just.
That, that leaves the door open for a realtor or leaves the door open for us to do it ourselves.
Well, we can always do it ourselves. But it's giving Joel, basically, this is the route we, we would prefer to do as a council, is go down this route and let him go do his thing and bring whatever to council.
I think none of us are realtors.
Yeah.
So I mean, the expertise we, we. Are lacking. It'd be really nice to hear what they have to say. So. Moving forward with the realtor would be where I would want to go.
But basically getting that we want to sell this land and what.
Construct that motion, I mean, right. I want to move forward. You know, I want to move forward, you know, and I want it to do it the right way.
Right.
And it's. Something that makes you show me look good. You know, that's what I want to have done.
It sounds like.
I think a good experience municipal, uh, realtor. Would already be on top of a lot of things that, uh. Mr. Myers had mentioned about all these things. Hey, you gotta put this in there. You gotta put this in there. The, that's what the realtors are paid to do. The good ones.
She's worked as a developer.
Right, with, that's what I mean. I'd experienced, somebody with that experience would know just the thing to do. That's my personal.
So preferred method is to go through a realtor, not try and do it ourselves.
That's why I think that saves. The town employees a lot of work too and. Okay, I'll make a motion that we proceed forward with the sale of this with the guidance of a town, of a, of a realtor.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
And I hope it be, it's an agenda topic for our next town.
I'm certain. That's. I'm certain it will be.
Yeah, I'm sure you're, you're. I just. You had a job topic or be discussing roundtable. New, other than just reporting on the status of things.
While we're still on this.
Yes.
I'm looking at this plot map. And there's. Those. Lots along Seventh Street are a tad smaller.
Yep.
So, but also smaller down in this. About here, these are smaller and these are.
Yes, most of these lots are oversized lots.
Yeah.
To begin with.
So I guess.
Ones are still bigger than current lots.
So these smaller lots. Were all here in a group. I, you know, I think that would be. A portent that I would. Recommend Joel to. Relate to the realtor. I would like to see those maybe be. Our smaller homes.
Well, they're still bigger than.
Our current lots.
Current lots.
Yeah, I know, but.
And they're seventy five by a hundred and fifty. Pretty good sized lots. They look smaller on here compared to the other ones, but they're, they're pretty good sized lots. Overall.
Yeah. What are you gonna do for the guy that wants to buy two lots and builds a two thousand square foot home, but wants an extra lot to have like what Mark and I have? A nice big shop to park his fifth wheel and his boat.
Well, I think the idea of having a subdivision is that if you don't. Have a secondary lot, doesn't actually have a house on it, so. No.
Well, you just ruined me of building a new home.
Well, actually, that's, there's a hundred, there's a, what, sixty more acre? How many more acres?
Yeah, we have, we still have the other side where you can buy five acres.
But you also have to have a paved street in a gutter, Jake.
Well.
God, you're demanding.
You want a shop or gutters?
I want both. Can't have my cake.
I want it all.
Okay. Mr. Quiver, sir, on to public works. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Mike, I'm sorry. Wind River Visitor Council Appointment, I forgot.
So request that to be tabled.
Yeah, we ain't got one.
So. Not ready to nominate one yet, so I have mayor requested.
Yeah, I, I guess. So, um, I'd entertain a motion to. Table the Winter Visitor Council Appointment under new business item B. We don't have that here and it's a mayoral appointment anyways, and he's not here.
Make a motion to table that.
You make a motion table? Thank you. Ben, uh, movement seconded that we table that, uh, discussion. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay, Mr. Quiver, sir. Mike. I'm sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Friends and members. I got an update on the, uh. Progress of. Our wells. Uh, well, number five is if the electric cord is not complete. The, uh. The inspector was out there as a power marshal. Conducting the electrical inspection. On that well. Wellhouse. And he was gonna give the contractor a green card. If it was, if everything was up to code. Yesterday. And that way, the, the contractor can call up the mountain power to energize that wellhouse. So they can. Check out all the electrical components, see if everything's working as it should. Once, once that is done, then, uh. The SCADA guys, Dusty and them. Well, they should be ready to. Fire it up. Manually. To flush it and see if it, it'll work. But, uh, the only thing that. SCADA is waiting on the, um. Wire, they, they got the wrong wire sent for the, uh, flow meter. When they ordered it, so they're waiting for a different wire.
Wrong gauge or what?
Yeah, on the, uh, flow meter, the wire. They, they sent the wrong wire with the flow meter. So they, they had to reorder the right wire.
Do we have, do we have a timeframe?
Well, Dusty said probably in about another week, you should have it. But other than that, that, it shouldn't be ready to. Um, fire up. But Dusty's got. Got it wired to where. He can still make that flow meter work, just. Two wires together. He's got it wired out. If he don't get that wire. So he can, he can still use it. Um. The, uh. Well, number four compound was delivered last week. And it's set already. Out there. And, uh. The carpenters are there, are there building the wall for the chlorine room. If that one's gonna have. Once they get, once they get done, uh. The con- contractor will go in and do the plumbing part, putting in the piping. And, uh, Joey will be back out to install that well again. One day. That's, that's sitting out there. I think Joey will, I think Rob said next week they would, might be able to do that. When he follow it, get that well back there. That's the one that they had. Fifteen. Fifteen, um. Of the pipe that we wanted to replace with, Joel said. Must to replace them now. There was at a cost of. Ten thousand, seven hundred and.
But isn't that grant matched?
No, we don't have no money in there. There, there's no force account on this. On these brands.
They're pre-approved, they're pre-approved grants?
Yeah. The Joel said that, I. Just to not order any.
My only issue is if we're already in there and there's issues. And we're this far in, why would we save ten thousand bucks? I mean, let's be hype, let's be real, we're, we're, we're doing the work.
Yeah, cause right now it'll cost you ten thousand seven. But if you, we go that, we go this route, I mean, we get it now. And we'd be, we'd be saving, because if. In the lot, in the. Next option, if that well goes out, the motor goes out or the pump goes out. Then you gotta pay the port. And you gotta pay for the pump and motor, then you're looking at thirty thousand as opposed to, it's ten thousand. That's, that's what I figure.
Oh. Thirty thousand versus ten thousand.
Cause ten thousand now, if you buy the pipe now, the drop pipe, it's, it's paid for in the grant. They'll, they'll install energy.
Yeah, the labor's free. We're just paying for materials.
Yeah.
I think that's something we need to revere and we probably are gonna have to have a workshop.
What'd be the timeframe on that?
Uh, maybe a couple of weeks. It depends, it depends on. How fast it get in, on the inside.
So I answer me this, if next week we met. On this behalf.
Yeah.
To make a call on that.
Yeah.
Would that be enough time to? To be able to do it or not do it?
Yeah, to be able to do it or not do it, then I'll, I'll see. How fast Joey can get it here. The pipe itself.
I just feel like it's. Paid labor.
Right.
And, uh. I don't know, it'd be nice to have Chris in here. Uh. Okay, well.
But that was one of the issues when they pulled that well.
I'll follow up with you since.
Huh?
I said, I'll follow up with you since I'm the councilman, that's. Uh, whatever they call them over your department or whatever.
Commission.
Discommunicator. Well, I'll go with that title.
Yes. Hopefully we'll be able to. Flush that. Well, five in another week or so.
Okay.
If they, if they got the green card yesterday and. Maybe. By the end of the week, that it should be energized. There, there was like only a few minor electrical problems that they had to do, like they had to put in some ground rods on the, by the piping on the inside. I think that was about. Some of the. Issues I see.
Uh, the only other que, the only other thing I have on my notes that I remember from last time we met was where are we at? What's the road?
Well, which one?
To the.
To the state. That, that's, that's.
Okay, well, we, I hadn't seen you since. Last two meetings ago, so I didn't know where we were at.
Yeah, that's, that's complete. All we're waiting on is there. All, all of the work is complete except for the, uh, sandblasting and the recording.
Okay.
And then we're never gonna do that until we get well four and five off the run. So. That would be working on two. And that, that well number two, they. They dug up test pit to see kind of soil in there. He was trying to go down six feet, he only made it about five four. It's all sandstone. They, they asked him to. To hydroback. There's two lines that come out of there. And I told him, I said, I don't know which one's which. For that old. The old line that ran originally or that, or that new line is. So I asked, um. Jamie, the law, if he could hydroback that, see what, what's under there. Make sure. Well, my thoughts is that north line is the newer. The most way it runs, the way I should. And that, cause the other one is, might be that old line. Previously. previously.
And when you have that, will you update drawings so we know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Along the, um, the, the Charlie Head Project, LCI, checking the Holgin Road Basin. They fixed out the other half of that parking lot. Some asphalt, and the other half is all done now. They got that, they got that finished. And he was wanting to move the bathroom north so he could, it'd be almost even with his, the, uh, that structure is always there. Because of the slope that, that's there and the for the A, ADA sidewalk. You only can run like a two percent rate. Um, it's pretty steep where it comes down, so he said if you can move it forward. And he was supposed to, uh, send me some, send me another paperwork on the quote and how much the difference is right now.
The?
The, the money, money wise.
Well, it should cut the cost if it's closer.
Yeah, it should, because it's taking out a lot of the, a lot of the, uh, concrete.
Right.
And some other stuff. But it's extending the drain, the drain filters. But he's gonna, he was supposed to give me a processment on all of that, but I haven't received it yet.
Okay.
I'm waiting on that, that part. And the next week, the, um, there will be an inspector here for doing some whole site inspections for the grants. The, the money guy, I guess. The money inspector. But he'll be here next week to check on the grants for the wellhouse rehab, the water tank and access road and the SCADA system. And he'll be here. Within, for two weeks, I mean. Inspection. See if everything's in compliance or whatever.
He'll be here inspecting for two weeks.
Yeah, he'll be, I mean, he'll be off and on, he's, he's trying to get as many and many inspections in as you can around the state. Maybe coming in off and on, or for you. So August eighth, I think it's, pardon, next Monday. Mike, actually took leave for a couple of months, went home and sees folks.
Months?
Yeah, months.
Months?
Yeah. He took a couple of weeks off, we'll see his.
Okay.
That is, didn't, enough there in ages, I guess, ninety, ninety-two, I think. Yes, that was during there you go, a couple of weeks. We'll be back August first, second. That's all I have.
Thank you. So, quick question for you, Mike, um, pardon my ignorance, but as I drive to the college every day, I look up to the north towards the cemetery and there's these big pieces of equipment there.
That's well four.
That's well four? Okay.
That's what we're working.
Okay. You see, I keep thinking the wells were further down the, the main road, but.
No, that's, that's well four. The other ones are up further.
Yeah, okay. Now I know.
Yeah, that's the one we're working on right now, well for. We just got that one last week, Mike, once.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Okay. I guess that brings us to the roundtable, I think. Get their own mind ill.
But now that Chris is back in here, that's on well five or well four that the, the piping.
Well, four.
Well, four, Chris. The drop piping on well four was this, this has already been brought to Joel's attention, but.
He has proposed amendment, Joel went out and inspected himself, but he didn't inspect the right pipe. He inspected the piping that was at the above ground at, at the well, not the below. And so that's what, uh, the change order, I believe it was for that, right?
Well, Mike is under the understanding they weren't gonna replace it.
Not, that's a change order. And so that's what's being considered. Um, Joel responded that, uh, he felt that it was fine and didn't need to be replaced. And then HDR responded back that he looked at the wrong pipe when he did his visual inspection of the piping. And that it was actually, the change order is actually the piping that's connecting below, that needs to be redone. Uh, and that's HDR's recommendation that it be approved as a change order, so that'll be something that, uh, we have to probably approve at the next meeting.
Well, he's saying we probably have less time than two weeks.
And we might have that especially.
And that's what we just talked about it, ten thousand bucks versus pulling it out and replacing.
They're like twenty-five, haven't come back in time or whatever, yeah. And that's, I'm just starting with, with the email chain since Joel's not here, um, but he never, uh, went forward the change order to bring it to council, um, you know, he was other stuff, so that's something we're probably gonna have to do as a special meeting to address.
Well, that's what I asked, it was probably gonna have to have a special meeting, I ten thousand or thirty thousand, it's pretty no brainer.
Yeah.
And, and the labor at this point's free because they're already in there.
Right. Yep, exactly, so. Uh, I'll get that, I'll get that scheduled and we have to have a special meeting this week, you know, if everyone's free on Friday for about fifteen minutes.
The what?
For special meeting on Friday.
I'm like six, the six fifteen?
Sure.
Or six fifteen, six thirty, something like that.
Yeah, whatever works for everybody.
I'm just gonna put this out there, I, I drew a buffalo tag, so don't count on me for any weekend, anything from the fifteenth of August to the end of January.
You'll need that much time.
I'll plan a special meeting for, uh, Friday at six o'clock. Well, I said I'll plan it, I'll get with the mayor. Well, no, a council can call a special meeting.
Yeah, if, yeah.
I'm just trying to get, what's the best time? I know you are. What's the best time for everybody?
Yeah, okay. No, I don't know. All right, yeah, I can do it this Friday evening.
Should be a quick meeting.
Yeah.
Next week I'm out of town, so.
Yeah, so.
Unless it's Wednesday, I can do it. I'll be back.
So, well, as long as, as Friday, as long as Friday works for everybody, I'll let Joel know and then you can.
This Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, about six o'clock.
That's fine, I had a class that I needed, four people I had to, though I canceled, so I'd be available.
It was fortuitous.
It should be a quick meeting, it's not gonna be, you know, drawn out, so it should be pretty straightforward. I think Mike's already kind of briefed the council on everything, so just more formality at that point.
Then I'll.
Ready at six fifteen, is that where? Six? Six.
Six fifteen would be better.
Okay, six fifteen. I'll let Joel know and unless there's any changes.
It's supposed to be at five thirty, but that's not getting your car at five thirty.
All right, we'll go with six fifteen and I'll let Joel know and if there's any changes.
And then all I got is three on three went well, uh, we pretty smoothly didn't have too much neighbor issues except for Saturday on teardown. Um, Chris handled those, I drove away and, uh, we had sixty-seven teams, um, it ran pretty smoothly, uh, the sixty-seven teams just, you know, makes it uh, allows us to be out of there faster, et cetera. Uh, we had, um, five, uh, WHSA Wyoming licensed officials through the state, uh, couple of which have read several state championship games, um, one of which has been distinguished the Wyoming State Official of the Year on several different occasions, or several different years. Um, and came all the way from Torrington to be here, so, um, yeah, pretty, pretty cool to have him here, um, and not only be here, but, you know, reffing the four A state championship and, and show up here, so that was pretty cool. Um, his name's Joe Wilson, super good dude. But yeah, went smooth. That's all I got. So. You know, the town has a rifle range committee, so I'm part of that, and so I'm working through Joel, I've been able to make contact with the BLM office in Lander. Her name is, uh, Letitia Black. And she's the one that, um, took over for the woman before her who, um, kind of dropped our material, our, our form, our application, I just never never did anything with it, so, you know, it's sat and addressed for, I think, a couple of years. And just really nothing happened. So the idea of BLM is to be able, our rifle ranges on BLM property, and so the idea is to um, get basically ownership of that property from the BLM, and so that's the process that's, that's going on. And so, uh, I was in a, uh, in Lander on a, for a meeting for the college and I was able to go over and I got to meet Letitia, so that was really a nice, nice setup. And she told me, yeah, this is something that's really important, it's something that's been kind of sitting around way too long, we need to take care of this, we need to get it done, and so that when I got back to the office, there was an email from her that included me and also her point of contact at, uh, the Cheyenne office for the BLM. And her name is Sarah. Nori, Nori, you know, I think. Anyway, so she's, um, and Sarah was supposed to respond back with, with the status, because it goes, the paperwork goes from Lander to Cheyenne and what, and so I hadn't heard anything from Sarah, she was supposed to reply back to all of us, that never happened. And so I said, well, I've got her name and I know that she, I have her email address and I know she's in Cheyenne, so I did a little search and found the BLM office and I found her phone number, and so I called her. And she picked up, I went, this was the score, so anyway, um, she's very well aware of our situation, she's a very nice lady and, um, nice person, and she, um, um, I, it turns out that she and Letitia have been Sarah's needed more phone, forms and so more information and Letitia's been supplying that, I'm not exactly sure what the status is. And so we have it set up now, um, that, um, I'm gonna call back in two weeks to see kind of what the status is and where it's at. So I thought it was funny, Sarah goes, you know, do you have any money that you're, that's out there that you can't have and you can't spend for the range? And I said, no, not yet. She goes, well, sometimes, you know, we don't want people to lose money, so we'll, we can kind of speed them up. And I said, well, it's been sitting with the BLM for, for multiple years now, a couple of years, two, three years, so you know, I would think that that would be enough to kind of get things going, and she just kind of chuckled, so, yeah, it, it kind of would be. So anyway, I'm gonna keep on her, I'm gonna keep doing, and the whole goal here, of course, is to get that property in our, um, in-town ownership, and when we do that, then I just think we can see some really major wonderful changes coming at the rifle range. Because we haven't done some improvements because it's not ours. And then you can do improvements, but the, the process with the BLM takes so long. We just haven't, it's just been sitting waiting. So, anyway, making progress and I will keep on Sarah and Letitia to get that done. That's what I know. And that's the way it is.
Uh, is there any audience questions?
Uh, Joel wanted me to bring up a couple of things. Um, one, he's, uh, wanting to form a board of preferably five members, minimum of three, but at least five, in conjunction with the A two A program, um, I believe he uh, wanted to not be involved as a board member, but he wanted, uh, Mark Nardine as a councilman to sit as the chairman of that board. Um, so he just wanted to kind of talk about that in more language than I'm gonna say, but basically that's what he wants to do. And to kind of give some direction and some advisement, I guess, to the town for, um, things like the housing project, you know, uh, other various things to promote the town and, and to grow the town.
Like a dog park?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and so he, he wants to form that board as a advisory board, um, with Mark as the chair. Um, and then secondly, uh, the Winter Business Council, um, and I went back and forth through various attorneys until I found one that, uh, drafted a, a letter that they wanted in the draft, so I guess that's why they call them attorney opinions, because you can find one, they'll give you the opinion you want. Um, so, in a nutshell, I don't know too much about it, I gave a copy to Marshall to look at, but it, it basically calls into question the current joint powers agreement and the way it's being implemented with the Winter Business Council. Um, and their budget process as well as their funding to the municipalities in the format TAD distributions and that they're saying essentially that they're following two, uh, competing laws, one for a special district, one for municipalities, and the attorney memo, uh, basically says that um, they're incompatible and, uh, they have no oversight, the board has no oversight, but the board as pointed out, is not an elected board, it is a, an appointed boy, a boy, a appointed board by elected officials from each municipality that make up that board. And that ultimately they're accountable to the municipalities that appoint them uh, for the budgetary fiscal solvency, I believe that's, I think Marsh is more keen on that than I am, that's basically what Joel.
They're not saying necessarily that the board doesn't have any authority, they're basically saying that the procedure for the way the budget is done isn't, is wrong, that they have to actually follow the same procedure the municipalities do. I.e. they have to go through, do the three readings, publish it and do it. And the people that are appointed to the board are the ones who do that, not the municipalities. And then they have someone that's designated to make sure that the expenditures are done per the rules and statutes and the budget. Not that every time it comes before each town to decide whether or not that budget can be improved.
So.
So they're essentially, they're saying the representatives that are sent by the town are the ones who decide.
And the town doesn't have any say so, I guess, is how I take it.
Well, you do through your representative.
Right, but once you appoint them, they make their liable or whatever for.
Right, but the thing is, right now, what, they come up with the budget and then it just goes around each town, and then it's agreed upon instead of doing what we do where we publish it, and then people get to come in and complain, say this needs to be changed.
Yep. So, I don't know what ramifications that has or if there really is any beyond that, or I don't know.
Just in how they do their budgeting process.
So do, to be continued, it sounds like.
I'm sure Joel will have a lot more expansive commentary on that than I just did, but he just wanted me to bring it to the council's attention that they had a special meeting, they went over this, and that's an opinion letter that was drafted by their attorney.
It, it sounds like, uh, it's gonna be a legal battle. So. And I think, I don't know if the town wants to get involved and pay, pay proportion of that or not, I think that will probably end up, the question ends up coming up.
Do we know where this stemmed from?
Uh.
Yeah.
It stems from the, we have argued, I'm certain, I don't know this, but I just know it. We've argued with them on their budget before and.
So are we the one leading this charge, is what I meant?
No, but they're leading the church to say we don't. They're, right now, every municipal, the way it's done is every municipality that's in the Winter Visitors Council and the commissioner's house to approve the budget.
Right.
Where there's no budget.
Which we were a part of this year.
Right, and they're saying, no, 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 you send board members, they approve the budget, that's the end of it. That's the, the super simplified version, but.
So what happened before was the, the argument came in, they got grant money in the middle of the year that wasn't part of the budget, and they went ahead and spent it without approval of the board. So as punishment, the next time they came around to get their budget approved, they got hammered by each one of the municipalities.
Some of the municipalities.
The majority of them, I, I believe, so, and it really became a real really contentious issue because they almost didn't get their budget through in time and, I mean, essentially wouldn't have been able to function. Be honest with you, it was pretty tight. Uh, the, so now, they're, we're, after reviewing stuff, obviously they got counsel, I'm gonna put it out there that I co-counsel with one of these attorneys, and I'm like, they're pretty well qualified people. Uh, but their opinion, his opinion is that, uh, they have been following the wrong statute for how they do the budget. In the past, because it's this countywide tax. Instead of just an individual, each little town pays into it like you would like a water district or what.
So if.
So the disper, disbursements have probably not been accurate to me either?
No, that's not it at all, actually it happened.
Okay.
But it is, it's just how they get the budget through.
So they didn't need to be coming to every town, essentially, it sounds.
Yeah, that's their, well, their argument is they're gonna have to go back and change their joint powers agreement, actually, it's what they're saying.
But it's, my question is, is if they inappropriately spend funds that were approved by the appointed board, who's liable for that?
Say what?
Like we're held liable as elected officials for the way the town's money is spent.
Yeah.
Well, that's tax money, and if it's not spent appropriately, who's liable?
Saying that, that they're, the board would be.
The, the appointed board.
Yeah, the appointed board in that district.
So the town officials wouldn't be liable for the expenditures from, uh, the Winter Visitors Council?
I don't know how you would be, I'd have to. I don't know how you would be. I'd have to research that, but it doesn't make sense. You'd have a point of. The degree of separation.
Yeah, that's what the mayor was talking about. His concern was that he's under the impression that. This council, when they appoint somebody, is ultimately the council's ultimately responsible fiduciary for. What the board does.
I don't see how that, I'd have to do research on that. I. I don't know of a case like that, but I.
I'm just, this conversation he told me today with.
Yeah, I'd have to look. I, I don't know, I. Appointing someone and that board would be the ones who are there then responsible as the fiduci- they're the, just like your. Uh, any other board of trustees, right? They're the ones who are fiduciary. They have the fiduciary responsibility. Each one of those board members themselves.
But they're generally elected, though, like special districts or.
They're appointed, most, a lot of them are appointed.
Oh, okay. So not all of them are elected.
Correct, yeah. And it is a joint powers, so yeah, it's.
I'm sure that's gonna be a topic coming up, so it's just wanted to let you guys know. And I have to copy this, like, I don't know if Joel sent it to everybody, but I'll send you a copy of the six page opinion. So you can read it and interpret it.
Any other thoughts? What about you, Tammy?
No.
Oh, sorry, John, I didn't. I was still waiting for Tammy.
The motion.
Well, I thought she already.
No, he's got.
For her motion.
Oh, oh, I see. So I went to the three on three tournament for a while and uh really enjoyed it. Uh, it was amazing to see how many people were there and the different ages and sizes and. Swing that thing up in the air. Nobody knew where it was going and where it would come down, but they were having fun. My only concern. Was the music. And it wasn't necessarily the genre of music. I, you know, I don't care, but it's just some of the lyrics were pretty vulgar. To be in a, what you wanna invite families to. And uh I just wanted to bring that to whoever's attention sets that up, that. Um, while they can do the rap and the all that stuff, um, maybe some of the Fs and G Ds and.
Usually we hire.
Whatever initial you wanna put in there.
Usually hire a DJ. We don't really approve the set list, but I mean. I guess in the future, maybe that's something we can say to use the uh edited versions of the songs and not the explicit language versions.
We we hire the DJ in certain hour, you know, certain times he'll. Say open, if anybody wants to come request a song and.
Yeah, I I didn't hear any of that. It wasn't, they're terribly long, but it's pretty much the middle of the day or the middle of the.
I don't ever hear the music personally, cause. We can.
We can address that easily.
And you know, mentioned we need to be a little bit more non-explicit. I mean, I know we have brought musicians in too. They're playing there and. They also happen to let off a few explicit ones once in a while and.
Um, and it's not that I've never heard them or even used them. It's just with. With all the kids and stuff around and I just thought, yeah, maybe they.
I can say ref in some of them games. Chris, Chris will, Chris will mention this too. You'll be refing some kids that knee high to the grasshopper and some of the things that come out of their mouth.
Well, they heard us from the music.
They're just singing along.
They've been hearing that for a long time.
Yeah, so I did appreciate that that and all the other stuff that's going on, as you've shown me. I didn't realize there was that much. Stuff that went on, you know, during the during the summer, so I'm glad to be able to partake in some of that. That was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we should we go home?
Second, I got third, fourth, fifth.
All those in favor?
I.
Post? Thank you.